My fellow leaders of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, my nation, my tribe, in this love, in this dream, and as a fellow.
All right, moving on to recognition, let's start the school committee.
I have two, uh, two recognitions here, uh, Skoljak and Rachel Schwab and the Aces Schools. Uh, let me order them to be with safety to recognize who were making holiday cards delivered to the club in valley and they did that, uh, for unity, uh, around all the costs and compassion. Some of the combinations was, uh, bringing cards to these people, that was very nice. And also to, uh, our new student teacher, Brian Dixon, made a standing chorus, uh, recognized for beautiful winter prizes, uh, which they did despite the fact that it was in their last home and so they, their confidence had withdrawn, so they did everything from help and it was very nice to them. Very good to see you and they'll go to the appropriate people.
One, yes, thank you.
I should have announced this at the beginning, but just by law, we need to announce that this meeting is being videotaped. All right, moving on to student of the month. Let's start with, um, Aces. Hello, we have two students this month, one from each side of the house and their teachers are here to, uh, talk about them and then tell them why they were nominated. So first from the kindergarten, would you be able to introduce your student?
So I teach community internet basis and I nominated RJ or Randy for student of the month because he's a great peer model. He's always goes above and beyond to help around the classroom with other students. He's always first to offer help. I can always count on him to set a good example following expectations in the classroom and in school. Aside from he's helpful, RJ has a great sense of humor. He's enjoy having class and he works so hard. He's worked, he's a great friend and he's so well-deserving of the support.
Can we, can we, can we talk yet RJ, come on up? Hi, Rachel Majewski is going to introduce Jocelyn, please. If she's here, she can come on up. All right, she's here, she doesn't she, somebody in the face. So I recommend Jocelyn as student of the month because she's a student behind both academically, socially, and her peers and she strives to succeed every day. She constantly asks me, how can I handle this? And she's an exceptional peer role model. She's always a helping student who, um, helps students that can't grasp something that she has already mastered. Every day she comes prepared, ready to succeed. Behind every child that is successful are role model parents. So I want to thank you for doing your job every day and thank you, Jocelyn. Okay, let's move on to worst student of the school. I'd like to call up Claire Maximera. So we were at our faculty meeting and the teachers were talking, who should we nominate for this month's, uh, student of the month? And Claire's name came up, um, from two teachers. She has two teachers, Ms. Benson and Ms. Robinson. Um, and Cheryl said, we're going to give her a certificate. Why was she nominated? This is what her teachers said. Claire is an all-around super kid. She helps others willingly and is always willing to be partnered with any and all students. She always tries her best on her schoolwork. She enjoys writing and loves to share her work. We guess we could go on forever, but this should be good. And then Cheryl said, that's not going to fit out one month. So we changed it to outstanding achievement in academics, effort, and character. And moving on to arms.
So I'm very proud to introduce you to Jayden Fox. As many of you know, he's a near fatal car accident like last summer. He's not only had a miraculous recovery, he's back full-time, an incredible example of perseverance. And also his family's helped bring some brain injury awareness to our school. All of our students were presented with a presentation by a brain injury companion. So very proud of him.
And moving on to Aces. I have a student by the name Michael McGurk, unfortunately, Michael had to work today. I don't see him, in case he changes mind. Um, but Michael received today an accommodation from Mr. Viges, the gym teacher. Um, Michael has come a long way, um, since he's been at Athol. And what I think Michael does specifically well during gym this year is taking one of our special needs students on his way and moderates them and works with the students and make sure that he participates in physical education, um, to make sure he becomes part of the team. And I'll be sure that Michael gets this, um, tomorrow. Okay, Subway Scholar Athletes of the Month.
The, uh, representing arms tonight for the Subway Scholar Athlete of the Month is a member of our boys' basketball team. His grade point average is a ninety-four and that's Connor Tontavonado. And representing the high school, she's a free sport athlete. She plays girls soccer, runs track in the winter and in the spring. Um, she's in the top five of her class as a senior this year. She has a four-point-two-three GPA and a great school board.
Okay, staff members, welcome.
I'm very excited today, um, to read a letter that I received from a parent in regards to Mr. Tom Osborne. If Mr. Osborne would come forward if he's here. Um, yesterday I received this letter in regards to Mr. Osborne's work here at the middle school and I just wanted to read it. That's why we're nominating him. My name is Crystal DeLaw. I have a sixth grade student Wyatt Fitzgerald at Arms. Wyatt is currently on his second year here. We moved to Athol a little over a year ago. Wyatt has anxiety, is one of the, with the end is on the spectrum. He struggles greatly socially and academically. As a parent of a, of course, I worry and only want the best for my child. In the new school, but not knowing anyone, I was especially worried. I went to Dr. Osborne last year with some of my concerns and he immediately set up an I repeat review meeting. He helped set things up and helped move Wyatt forward. This school year, not even into the full week of school, my son became very withdrawn and again I went to him. I didn't set up a meeting or call, I just asked if he had a moment. He spent an hour speaking with me that day and again helped set up a review meeting. During the meeting, he helped to ensure that all possible measures were being taken to help Wyatt. Yesterday, my son came home and had a complete breakdown. He's struggling all around. I called Dr. Osborne today and he spoke with me for over thirty minutes on the phone. Over the years, I've had many school staff at previous schools give me the runaround with no follow-through. Ultimately, only hurting Wyatt, only hurting Wyatt. Dr. Osborne is extremely intelligent, uh, personal and really takes the time to not just make a parent feel better, but he takes the time to speed. He has been a wonderful advocate for Wyatt and always has taken the time to figure out what is going on. I truly cannot say enough good things about him. He understands not just science behind what's going on, but he has a link to get to the parent's level, uh, the child's level, and he works hard to come up with plans that actually help. The sixth grade teachers are outstanding and work hard with him as well and maintain regular communication with his dad and I. I truly believe that all it takes is the one person to see past the surface of someone and what's really there to make a difference. On top of having amazing teachers who care at Arms, you have Dr. Osborne, who, who's by Wyatt's side, believes in, believes in him. He doesn't quit and when they don't see their own work, he reminds them of it. Thank you, Dr. Osborne, and you're right.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business, first elementary girls' basketball. Uh, I'd like to read straight. I just, before I begin though, I just want you to know that this is my personal response. At the last school committee meeting held on September nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, Mrs. Tammy Duquette read a statement on behalf of the parents, guardians, the Athol Middle School Basketball Team, Girls' Basketball Team. I was unable to respond at the time, but felt a public response was needed. Please understand that this is only my personal response. It is my understanding that a complaint was received by the District Athletic Director about racial, about racial remarks allegedly made by the members of the Athol Middle School Girls' Basketball Team during a game with Sabres International. It is also my understanding that this information was presented or passed on to the school principal according to protocol. Further, it's my understanding that the superintendent did, uh, not know of this alleged incident until she received, three days later received a phone call directly to her from a relatively Sabres team member. The team needed to know what accusations had been made against them. They deserved the consideration and it was their right to know. I was not present when the superintendent spoke with the team. I can only imagine that the message was delivered passionately and firmly to impress upon the team the seriousness of the allegations. The district administration moved quickly and quietly to get to the bottom of the situation. And by the way, this is not called sweeping it under the rug, but it is called protecting these girls and their reputations. Unfortunately, however, um, others outside of the administration have not chosen to go that route. In the end, many teaching and learning points have arisen from this situation, including equity, empathy, compassion, and integrity. I have also received correspondence from a member of the school committee and from parents and guardians. I'll start with a member of the school committee. Um, I received a correspondence from him in relation to this situation and I felt that it was a correspondence to the entire committee, not just to me, because we are a committee of ten, I am not a committee of one. So it was, I included it in the handbooks for the school committee so that they know what it is. And at this time, I would like to ask, is it true that you would like to comment on this?
Uh, not on the email because I felt personally related, inappropriate to move this stuff in public. But anyway, um, no, I'm willing to move on from that, um, but I do have a statement regarding the overall issue at hand, uh, after yours and, um, parents.
Okay, um, the second correspondence, which you see by, I believe, the entire committee via mail from the parents and guardians, uh, team members, um, had five requests and at this time, and I think, I believe we could actually receive a response to this, however, I feel it's also very important that a public response from our council is in order. So I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Benjamin P. Aron.
Well, there are a number of requests, uh, five requests specifically. But the federal law, which is FERPA and the Student Records Act, has not--
Yeah, we can't hear you either.
Under federal law and state law, we cannot release individual student records to members of the public. It's actually prohibited by state and federal law. Uh, one law is known as FERPA, which is federal law. The state law is Student Records Act. The only information that any member of the public is entitled to regarding a student record is the particular character of a particular child. And if they want the record of that child, they have to submit it to the school district and the record of that child is given. But you cannot obtain the record of other students. You cannot obtain the information by state. And in fact, last year, I actually argued a case before the state on this particular issue. And I had the decision of the state in that particular case. And it indicates here, the complainant asserts that the district refused to provide her with information regarding a student that is not her child. The information would constitute a student record information. No third party shall have access to information in or from a student record without the specific informed written consent of the other student or the other student's kid. So the federal law is FERPA, as I already indicated, uh, and the state law is cited as six oh three CMR twenty-three point zero zero. So with regard to the specific request, the actual complaint letter is not a public record, it's a student record. So if a student from Sabres complains about the actions of students in Athol Royal City, that complaint is a student's record of a student in Sabres. The actual civil rights investigation and statements by all the students is also a record which cannot be publicly released. The interviews cannot be released for the same reason. The results generally have been released because they do not identify these specific students. Uh, as far as what training might be anticipated by the school district, that's an issue that, uh, could be released. I don't know what the status of that, if any.
Can I speak to that, Greg?
Yes.
My understanding is that selecty did send a letter home to the students in regards to that last bullet, uh, basically saying that the determination at this time has not been made as far as the vendor and to you will get the training, um, asking and requesting that parents are interested in being part of that, that they may contact selecty, I believe by today to do that. So my understanding is that, but it was on Monday, is that correct, Greg?
Yes, and I have received a few responses, being a part of that process.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, um, I, is, is someone out there, any who wants to be heard? District representation, are we able to ask questions about how possible this happened with the investigation? Because I'll fail a lot of the say based on that.
You know, the best thing you could do--
I'll have you to ask the question, you can say, I can answer that and then I'll go on. Because I do have questions and I'm not answering and no parents have them as well.
Well, I gave you the general outline under federal and state law and I have to argue these cases all the time, for Dustin and--
Well, they don't keep my questions as specific to the person as possible that actually can answer them, if they can, plus or not. But I do have some questions.
You can ask some questions, I'll give advice.
Hi, everybody, I'm Sammy Duquette. I'm the mom that talks for the team, but if everybody who's here can stand up. Um, this is a community that is, um, having a difficult time right now and everybody here is here on support and in capacity, ready? Um, I won't make you stand through the whole thing, but thank you guys for being here tonight and I'm proud to be a representative of your kids and my kids. Okay, so a few questions I try to use the answers to and I was wondering, if you can verify to me, who is the civil rights officer for the district? Who is the president--
There are two civil rights officers from the district, Molly Supperchuk and Mary Jane Ritz.
And they are, is neither of those beings are known in anywhere on any form?
I am aware of that. I was notified of that. Our handbook, just so you know, our, our getting a weird cellular update did not happen, but they have been framed by our student lawyer to do that.
Great, so my next question goes on to--
Just, just so I, just so I could finish answering, so it's Claire. I have asked our tech director along with Catherine Clark to go ahead and make sure that is checked over in the handbook so it is clear.
Perfect.
Um, but I have to prepare that.
Perfect. Um, so my next question goes out to you. What is the purpose of civil rights officer in this district?
The purpose is in cases of support for, they've been trained, go through any processes or structures that need to happen when an incident occurs that may be violating the civil rights law.
And you're not that person?
I am not that person.
But you spoke to our children on behalf of the civil rights issue when the officer should have been contacted, yes or no?
I would like to say that my responsibility as the superintendent of school to find the secret complaint can notify people of complaint, not to investigate, but all I was doing is notifying the children of the complaint.
Did you know that the children had already been involved or aware of the complaint online from the athletic director who told the coach he'd been sent to the school?
No, I was not aware of that.
Okay. So the children actually learned of the allegation from their coach on Monday. I'll go through everything that happened in a brief statement, but I have a couple more questions. Um, so you've actually reopened an investigation that had already been closed by the athletic director, who at the lowest level received a complaint?
Yes, because at the time, they did not interest in children on our side or the Sabres side, which needed to happen in order for the investigation to be made clear.
Okay, that's not really outlining the handbook, so I won't question that. But from what I understand in the handbook, the athletic director receives a complaint, then the, they know, they ask the coach, they talk to the referees, they make a decision and that is done based on the--
Yeah, and that, that is not sufficient legally. Under Title IX of the United States Code, if there are allegations of, uh, civil rights violations, including racial violence, that it has to be investigated by a title nine coordinator. It can't be just the responsibility of the coach or even the superintendent.
So the athletic book says it should be handled at the lowest level, does it mean that?
Well, it does, unless it's a civil rights--
Okay, so that wasn't--
Civil rights--
So that's the question was, why was it, why was it open if it was already closed? And the conclusion was the same?
Yeah, because legally, it has to be reviewed by a Title IX coordinator as a matter of law. That's under the Office of Civil Rights and it's under Title IX. So if the district fails to have a Title IX coordinator, they can be cited by the OCR, Officer Dustin. It's a legal requirement.
Understood. Um, can I ask the two investigators to interview the game officials that day, for that day?
No, they did not.
Right, thank you. Um, that was quite, that's the end of my question, so I have a prepared statement that I'd like to say to everybody tonight. Bear with me, it's a little lengthy, but the situation's been going on for months, so I apologize in advance. Um, my prepared statement, thank you, Chairman and Superintendent of School Committee members, family and friends for being here this evening. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to a topic that's been very difficult for everyone involved. As a community, we're here this evening because we feel that due process for our children is not followed. We feel that the behavior of our top leader Superintendent Fernandez is the unbecoming of her title. We feel that an impartial investigation questioning all parties involved was not forwarded to us. To have a complete picture of why we're here tonight, it's important for the community and the community to understand our frustration. I will now outline some events that took place earlier. As you know, we've heard the athletic director received a complaint. He did an investigation, he closed it with no findings. Um, he followed the procedure that was available in the athletic handbook that all the parents can read and I'm sure we did not know about, if it's an issue that have to do with civil rights, he'd have to get somebody else involved, so there's a teachable moment there. I also want to go on to say that Superintendent Fernandez told me to face-to-face meeting on one seven with Lonnie Bonafont that I offered the player, called her directly and she had no choice but to open the investigation again. And if that was the law, then I, I'm glad she complied with it. I want to get to the heart of the matter and it was her, it was how she confronted our children. And this is difficult for me because out of any kid, you have to go through this. On twelve eighteen, Superintendent Fernandez had a meeting with our girls' basketball team during practice that evening. Prior to any civil rights investigation, Superintendent Fernandez accused her kids of racial slurs by stating how disappointed she was in them. She used scare tactics by telling the girls that visual evidence existed of the alleged behavior. She used incrimination tactics by pointing at the players, asking them why they cringed when she mentioned the video. She then tried to coerce them into a confession by saying, you better tell the truth now because if I have to dig for it, the consequences are going to be worse. In an email to me on the evening of twelve eighteen after her meeting with the team, she replied, I'm going to ask civil rights officers to do the investigation to ensure neutrality. No child hasn't accused, has, no child has been accused of anything at this point. However, Superintendent Fernandez passed immediate judgment and denied our kids' neutrality by way of her actions. She lied to us and she stated that no child had been accused. The fact is, she accused them. On twelve nineteen, Superintendent Fernandez had a teleconference with two parents that appeared this evening, Lonnie Bonafont and San Deacon, about her inappropriate meeting with our daughters on twelve eighteen. She stated that she let her own personal experiences affect how she reacted to the situation. And she agreed that she felt she owed the girls an apology and that she would give them one. We felt that apology from her, directly to them, was acceptable. As parents, we agree we're all human. We all make mistakes and showing kids the ability to apologize when you're wrong is a character of any strong leader. So we sat quietly and waited for that to take place. When the apology from Superintendent Fernandez, Fernandez's misconduct didn't take place, we decided that we needed to bring this to the school committee and attempt to put a call. that we needed to bring this to the school committee's attention for help. I want to say, school committee, more than half the members have been very supportive, they've reached out, they've met with us. I'm going to keep their names confidential because I don't think it needs to be known, but they know who they are and I appreciate that. The next part that really starts to get to me in the community is that the Apple Village News, obviously, everybody, you know, in a small town knows what happens, is a comment that Superintendent Fernandez stated to the Apple Village News article on 12/21. She stated that she received the complaint, informed the students of the complaint, let them know the incident was under investigation, and that based on allegations, our civil rights officers would be interviewing them, and would render a report to the school's principal based on their findings. While this is the premise of her dealings with this topic, it couldn't be further confirmed. Yes, she did receive the complaint, that is true. She was the second person to receive the complaint, and from parents' perspective, which indicated the athletic director had already received the complaint, followed through, closed the window findings, just like the investigators. She informed the students, yes, she did inform her students, she stood in the gymnasium, and she accused them while attempting to intimidate her of using scare tactics against them. Civil rights interview, yep, she did, she asked civil rights investigators to be with our kids. As soon as she tapped air to be with her kids in the gymnasium, she said that they were questioning civil rights officers, they couldn't follow the public parents. I understood the law, they couldn't, didn't need to follow, doesn't mean they couldn't act. Report to the principal. She said that the principal was going to make some decisions. The evidence rendered to the school principal lacks any information about the evidence that supports the findings. I questioned the principal about the letter issued to us, asking for evidence of the findings as he stated. I was provided with a written report, the essence of what was shared in the letter dated 1/4/19. I was not provided the specific details regarding evidence that was gathered during the investigation. So the person was supposed to decide how our title goes forward in our community's area, because no one knew what the hell happened. Great. By 12/21, the investigation was complete, the Friday before the Christmas break. Civil apology to our children. The principal called to inform me that all the line was in sight, we could not be releasing any findings until after the holidays, so all the families involved went through the entire person's vacation break that is hanging over our heads. Out of split faith, we remained quiet until the investigation findings were issued on 1/4/19. In an editorial published by the Apple Village News on 1/4/19, this woman that Superintendent Fernandez said, "The investigation is ongoing, but she does not apologize for her administration's handling of the affair so far." On January 5th, after the findings laterization to the parents, players, parents concerned with the handling of the issue and the reputation of our children in their hometown communities coverage, we created a Facebook page called Concerned Parents, the A-R-R-S-E. It was only then did we start to pay attention to the administration, by way of phone calls from superintendent, looking for meetings, anybody who presented a counter. In the meeting with Superintendent Fernandez on 1/7, which I did grant her the meeting because I felt that she deserved the respect to be able to listen to her, because that's the type of person I want my child to be. I asked Lonnie to come with me as a second parent involved in the situation. She started off the meeting by telling me that there were no findings. That's not what the letter said. The letter did not say that there was no finding, it said it was inconclusive. It's very different. It also said that evidence supports that the kids stood it. And I asked Superintendent Fernandez what the evidence was. She told me the evidence was more than one child said had happened. I don't call that evidence, I call that hearsay, and I've got 17 children, a coach, referees, a clock paper, and a minimum of 40 spectators have sat in the audience that day. Not denying that there is a learning experience here for our children, and that any type of racial discrimination should ever be tolerated, so I'm the first person to say that the fact never happened. So yes, we submitted the appeal letter. I did not get a response to the appeal letter yet, so my apologies for being ignorant on what we discuss, because I don't have the time.
If I could just address that, so just a counsel, I can send a response to a written response to your letter. So I'm busy tomorrow, I have a case on the South Shore, but I can get written response to your letter, outlining the law on Tuesday next week today.
You attend this stage, you do what you please, you reference us out with the information.
Well, that's part of the problem, I do have ten business days, and they happen to this rate, but that's supposed to be an individual request, not from individual. So as I indicated before, under perp, an individual student has, a parent has the right to request information about their student.
Right.
So what I'm going to do is send a response to you regarding your student.
Have you other parents here, although?
Well, they have been submitted a request.
But it's my request on behalf, and I have one signature.
Yeah, but the signatures don't indicate that they have...
They belong to the...
If I could. Yeah, it has to be a formal, you know, this public record law, in fact, the first request doesn't technically need it because not...
Well, I'll carry on with that.
If I could, yeah, let me just finish, so that everyone understands what it means here. If they want to respond, then they're supposed to send it to the superintendent, saying, "I want this information about my child regarding this investigation." Then what happens is information is sent regarding that child, and any other student information are redacted from that information. So you won't get a follow-up investigation report, you only give individual students because that's the law. Now, as I said before, we're talking about the 10-day time period. The only specific request I have is you, so I can respond to you.
Perfect.
If other people want to respond to them, they have to put in a separate request.
So to wrap things up on parental side of things, at the end of this whole ordeal last week, I've received two letters from Darcy, asking, actually, the first one was an attempt at an apology, which was pretty much victimizing the children all over again for not reading her intent correctly, these are children. The second letter was issued to our kids, which was all dated wrong, which was here as a request to speak to our children this past Monday. I think just about every player was there, and we granted her the access to our children. I know some of us, myself personally, I did not want her to be mole with my child, so I granted her the ability to talk to our kids, because I felt it was important that they hear from their top person that mistakes happen. So Superintendent Fernandez, go, go. The basketball team was cast Monday, and parents were invited to come if they felt they needed it. I'm going to read to you some comments, and this will bring great alarms to me. She states the following. "As you know, the complaint I received was about racial slur. Anytime I have to discuss a matter like that with anyone, it's difficult for me. Being a woman of color, I've never heard the F N word. Whenever I hear the N word, it disturbs me. And I think my emotion around that may have come up when I was talking to you directly, and you may have perceived that, you may have perceived it as me feeling so you did something. I don't have a close approach to it in any way that could make a difference on anyone." She went on to say that Mr. Chaliki is the person who's going to be rendering the ultimate authority on what happens. "By her only mission, she is not clear on how to best navigate the waters when the subject of racial slur allegations is placed upon her. Because of this, we feel that the school staff, including Ms. Fernandez, should also receive additional sensitivity training on how best to handle these issues." My last statement is, "The purpose of being here tonight is to bring attention to the lack of training and this conduct on behalf of the administration, the lack of the policies that protect our students, the set light on procedures failing, failure during the entire process. Take it to your time, and any other parents, anything else they want to say." I just want to say that I always thought, and I don't know if this is the same with the situation, but you're innocent until proven guilty.
Sorry, sir.
Innocent until proven guilty. I feel like that wasn't what our girls received, and I'm thoroughly disappointed in how they were interrogated. Thank you.
Another community member comments, "I don't know this community number, but Judy Shapley is what she said, and I think it's important for you to know what the community thinks." "I completely understand a personal emotional reaction to the situation. However, I am very surprised that someone can get to the level of superintendent and not know the protocol and procedures of investigating complaints. We're all human, but there's a level of professionalism that's expected when you put in the timely experience to be at the highest position of power and authority in this district. Regardless of what the allegation is, whether it's bullying, name-calling, theft, threats, drug use, and yes, racism, it starts with an investigation to determine the facts, not an accusation of guilt. Her reluctance to see the error incorrected in early stages would have prevented the situation from escalating. I was very disappointed in the barely there apology letter delivered to each player only after the situation escalated to the point they had been realized that parents were not backing down. I really hope that lessons are learned here. It would be very hard for this superintendent to issue out discipline to other administrators if they mishandled investigations after how this was mishandled by our top administrator. I'm in complete agreement that there needs to be training at an administrative level." And that was our community's answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to be clear, my statement, again, as the chair said, this is my own personal opinion, it's not representative or respective of the school committee, and it's not based to be derogatory towards employees, et cetera, it's just on the process. On December 14th, 2018, the Arns Girls Basketball Team played against Sabus International Chartered School in Springfield. A post-game accusation of racial slurs being used by Apple during the game was received by the district. The district initiated an investigation, of which I have no issue with, as it should be done. After an initial meeting with the team and the superintendent, I began to receive comments and concerns from parents in the district. I did receive copies of the letters that were sent to the parents, as well as a letter dated January 4th, 2019, by Principal Taleke, announcing the results of the process. The letter stated, "While a determination is inconclusive, and no specific determination was made against any student, evidence supports racial statements were made by the members of the Apple Royals and Basketball Team towards members of the Sabus International Chartered School." Early on in the process, it was alluded to that a video existed that would prove that at least one very specific racial slur was used. This video was never found, however, I did happen to view two videos from Sabus parents that merely shows their child making a basket, nothing else, no crowd noise, nothing. Was this process that our students were made to endure based purely upon hearsay? A reminder that a lack of evidence in a court of law that does not result in guilty beyond a reasonable doubt means that person is to be found not guilty. Results labeled our students as guilty in the court of social media, which was very unfortunate. I personally believe that inconclusive result should have cleared the girls, however, was inconclusive the term that should have been used, or it should simply have been, "No findings," and left it at that. Initially, the verdict came, along with the announcement, that all district athletes would have to undergo sensitivity training. I ask here tonight, why? If the findings are inconclusive, why are all athletes being required to attend? Does this not drive a further wedge between the Arns Girls Basketball Team and other athletes in the district? A district-wide sensitivity training such as this should also be discussed by the school committee, who formulates policy, not by one or two people. Parents must have the option to opt out their children. I firmly believe that the Arns Girls Basketball Team has experienced all the training that they need during this process. Questions exist, for example, if racial slurs were used during the game, why didn't the Sabus coach immediately notify the referees, who would have taken appropriate and immediate action under Rule 48 of the MIAA Regulations Field with Taunting? This would have stopped the game with warnings given and possible ejections of players. I did happen to research with the Office of Civil Rights in Boston, the Division of the Department of Education. First off, the OCR states that the position of superintendent, and I say the position, I'm not saying the person, should not be a civil rights coordinator in a district because of potential conflicts of interest based upon rules and responsibilities. Earlier in the school year, during school training of staff, a PowerPoint was presented that listed the Director of Public Services as the Civil Rights Title IX Coordinator. But somewhere along the line, this changed to the position of superintendent in the handbooks that this committee approved. Now, while MJ and Lonnie, us, our civil rights officers, currently, what the school committee voted on was the Title IX Core, and it being the superintendent of schools. Also, OCR states that students on education plans such as 504s or IEPs, et cetera, must have guaranteed services at the time of investigation. Did our process consider that factor? And were any children affected by ed plans offered such services? Based upon my own personal research with OCR, and based upon the process, letters et cetera, involving the issues, I would suggest simply that the school district have its attorney, Brett Duperight, reviewing the entire investigative process used by this district to ensure that they meet current standards and criteria moving forward. In closing, I would like to thank the parents and supporters of the Arns Girls Basketball Team for bringing concerns to this committee. More parents need to do this in order to move this district forward. And I would also like to say to the Arns Girls Basketball Team, thank you for standing tall and standing proud throughout your ordeal. Thank you. I just want people to be aware that ultimately, I have gone to the girls, I've talked to them, I again will apologize if people feel that I haven't approached it the way you would have liked me to, but I will take your recommendation seriously, and the training is something that we've already been talking about, and so ultimately, I will look back to you on how we will go about doing that as we move forward, and I do apologize if there was a mistake in the handbook as prior to mine, me being the person with Title IX. Like I said, I would make that correction immediately, I would really ask people to work on it. Thank you.
I just also want to thank the parents of the community, and I wanted to say that I, in the narrow, I completely am confused and all, and I'm a little vague of the school committee. I hope that it goes forward, that pain eases and things are done, which helps to soothe people's feelings and make people feel very positive. I know that this committee and this superintendent, this school district is committed to doing great things for your children. We tried that very hard this year, I think you noticed for the first time in years and years and years, we've seen dramatic improvement on the end cast, and that comes through the work of the teachers, through the work of administrators, through the work of the school committee and the superintendent and her administrators. And I would like to think as we go forward and we get past this incident, because we will at some point get past it, even with all the mistakes and all of her feelings, we will get past it, but I'd like to think if we'll come together as a community, discuss it. I can tell you that the one thing that's in my heart, it's the same thing in your heart, and it's the same thing in the heart of every kind of person here, and that is truly that every child in this school system does need a champion, we want to be the champion for your kids, and if we haven't shown that, I'm sorry for that, but I can guarantee you that's what we're feeling, and we want to go forward and we want to do great things, continue to do great things for your children. Thanks so much for coming.
Just one quick statement, as parents, we don't care about end cast or anything, we care about teaching them to be good, and that's my last.
to help pay for a standby generator at Royalston. This is not, this is not new. Those of you who have been on the board for a few years know this is a work in progress for us, but I'd like to just give you a little bit of background about this request. So after the ice storm faced when we lost power for about eight days in our community, and I know some around the community as well, we realized how vulnerable our community was in a situation like this. Our residents, particularly our elderly residents, our poor tenants, many of them were without heat, without electricity, without food for all of those days of the emergency event. People really scrambled to kind of keep us safe on an ongoing basis. So we realized how vulnerable our population was, and also realized how vulnerable our buildings are. So we began to think about where we could create a temporary shelter for our residents in Royalston, and we decided that Royalston really should be a perfect location for this. So we, so we have been pursuing putting a standby generator there, and we see this as having several benefits. The first benefit to you, as owners of that building, we believe that if a standby generator is able to run the heat in the building during its long outage, then the risk of frozen pipes would not be something we're not content with, first pipes and water damage. So we see it as a way to protect their investment in the building that you own. So that's one of the key advantages. The other is the safety of the children. Currently, I believe the RCS safety evaluation site is the D W Barn. If there were a standby generator at the building, and if there were a power outage during school day, then the children would be able to continue in their classes and stay safe in the building until the end of the regular school day when they can go home. So we believe this is an alternative to being at the D W Barn. And then, and then the third benefit would be for our residents, this generator would run the electrical system, keep going, and fire suppression system going, so that our residents can be given a shelter. So, so we have, as you can see on the handout that I gave you, in the annual town meeting in Royalston, two thousand and thirteen, we allocated seventy-five thousand dollars for this project. We are continuing to investigate additional funding for this, but we are, right now, we have some estimates that bring the cost in around a hundred and twelve thousand, so you can see we're quite a short. So I am here to just request that you consider this. I know you can't give me an answer tonight, but I know you're working on your budget, and I'm here to ask, answer any questions.
Just had a quick question, people, being near to the Royalston side of things. This came to a little bit of surprise to me, because I wasn't aware of the two thousand and thirteen decision, sort of, to get a generator. And I just might ask, given you and I and the other members of the committee who probably work more closely, to kind of give more of a heads up to the committee in the future, you know, so that they kind of know a lot of plans about the tarot issues, you know, it's pretty clear since, you know, the town, you know, wants to use the school as a shelter and blah, and the bonus of having a generator in the, in the school, it's everybody. I think we certainly, we've been open to consideration, I know Fred has done some research on that too. So I think, I think, there's a, there's a letter that was given to the committee with Fred's advice.
Yes. Which the regional agreement doesn't back indicate the assistant for a corrosion based on the student population in Athol in Royalston School Building, and I have had requests from people, have you seen this?
I haven't, I just.
I've got a copy.
Do you want me to read this, or do you want to speak to it?
You know, we can read it for the public, only the public, they're, I can read it if you would like.
I'm just asking if you want me to be aware of the contents of this proposal. I'm sorry, but I can see.
Can I just remind my chapter?
I can, all right.
Yeah. Ultimately, the goal is, we are in the middle of a budget, do not earmark this for this year, so it's not in this year's budget, so the discussion is, so the committee's aware it's for next year's budget, as to whether we want to do this, and so included this part of our budget for next year.
I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty or twenty-one?
For, it will be fiscal year twenty. Yeah, so Fred's recommendation, I think, is solely in relationship to our agreement and what that means in relationship to making a decision about it.
Yeah, so the regional agreement calls for capital cost to be apportioned in early forty-five days before the first annual town meeting, the full town, for ensuing fiscal year among the member towns, on the basis of each member town pupil enrollment in such schools. So that is the formula that you, because there are a number of students from Athol that attend school in Royalston, it still requires an affirmative vote by the school committee, so it's not automatic. But, but that's the corrosion, and that was a legal question on the last five or six pages.
So, okay.
Now, I noticed in your document that you patched out, that, and I didn't see this report tonight, you had indicated costs, and then indicated how much Royalston is willing to contribute for that cost, and what's the short term. So, the real methodology, methodology should be based upon the regional agreement, and it's really based on pupil population in what.
So let me be clear, I, and I apologize if this is misleading, I am not assuming that you would do the whole forty-seven thousand, that's just indicating how much money you need to short. So whatever this school department can port toward that, whether, and I apologize for not knowing of the, or the details of the proportionment, and it's still a lot clearer, but that is not, it's, I'm, Royalston is not coming asking for forty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, and just to be clear, my thinking would tend to, this was the regional agreement, I mean, it wasn't without any specific knowledge of the dollar amount or anything else. This is what the regional agreement said, and that was the sole basis of the legal basis.
So I think the question is regardless of the amount, the request, which is unclear, but the question, the question is, if the proper proportion can be worked out, whatever that is, does this committee support allocating that amount of money towards the generator that's looking for, is that correct?
I was just, a question for Fred. There was made clear that this is a dual purpose generator, both will keep the kids safe, but have them, you know, in a safe environment in case of power outage, and as the committee may not know, the majority of the kids in Royalston communities who are actually from Athol, so, you know, is very substantial, number of Athol kids who have been invited. The other objective is to have it as a possible refuge for vulnerable people in our community. How does that affect your thinking about how we, what kind of proportion is appropriate?
Well, the.
The regional agreement tells us what proportion is appropriate. There's eighty-five kids out of one hundred and thirty-eight at Royalston, so sixty-one percent, whatever we decide, would be more than my.
So what, what you're saying is the secondary usage as a, as a possible shelter in a prolonged outage does not.
That's one question to Fred.
So, basically, it's capital cost. Capital cost is another of the regional agreements. And so, you know, the regional agreement is documented, like, in the agreement between towns. The town is a leader, and they form the regional agreement, that this is a scheme that applies to capital cost. So.
Okay, I got this, yes.
Just to clarify, yeah, I think the, what, what the letters are getting to is that it's not necessarily the school committee's choice or decision to, because the town of Athol is going to have to allocate money, so we can't just spend district money on donating toward the generator for RCS, because the town of Athol has an apportionment in sixty-one percent of, if, if we just assumed you were looking for the full thirty-seven, Athol would be responsible based sixty-one percent of that. So there would be some logistics as to how Athol would pay for a generator that would be used at a Royalston building, even though it's a, you know, it's a school district issue. So I think there's, it would make sense to me that this could probably go through the Budget Subcommittee for additional work, and then we could, you know, look into it. I can speak with the town manager in Athol, because I'm unsure at what point, you know, how we, I think the Budget Subcommittee's got to look at, you know, is it ten thousand dollars that we might want to earmark to it for a decision of our own rights and speech to, and then go from there.
Yeah, me, that's exactly what I was hoping. I, I know that, well, I would say I'm not clear what the process is, but what you just said makes totally sense to me, that, that this has to go through a lot of channels to be looked at and considered, so thanks for that question.
I have a question actually, Lee. Your work as a superintendent, you're in any schools, staff, generators, and ACES? And now that, and now that ACES has been clear, we should be able to declare that as a emergency facility, which is, should we be able to comment here?
I want to say that I think it's, you're in a common situation, and often that's a school building, emergency building in town, which is a school building. I want to speak myself and say that I think it's a great idea, it's also a good idea that we can, we can go to the Budget Subcommittee, but I want to give you a talk up, because it's a little binding for the regional committee.
Danny, there was another question that, that, again, this is, as you noticed, it is not your cut, so that's why we had to bring it to the committee and get everybody's questions to share, but one question you did ask me, which you're not ready for tonight, maybe, because you resolved it, but you asked me if we could actually put it in and nail it.
Yeah, and, and I don't think, yeah, we, we understand, in fact, you were the one, Linda, said to me.
I, I don't think so.
It's too, and Kath, I did ask someone, and it's too messy, so, no.
I did recommend she also talked to her council on her end.
Right, right, right. So, so, you know, this whole logic is not likely to happen in this country, it's probably going to happen in head by head, so I think that's for. Good thinking, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to budget and class size.
Yes, I know at the last school committee meeting, one thing that was asked was, looking at the budget for next year and looking at class size, and the recommendations that were made by Shannon as far as the reconfiguration over there, how would we address making sure class sizes remain low, so I wanted Mrs. Shannon to come up and actually speak to that. I know we may not have an answer yet, but I just want to see where she's at in that broad, um, report.
So, Darcy and I have been in some conversations about class size and projections for next year, and we've tried, and we've tried to go, it's hard to plan, but we're unknown. So fortunately, we had about twelve new students register at ACES since the first grade, and plan for that impact. So right now, I'm, I'm looking for some direction as I'm working with the rest of the community. Right now, we're looking at next grade, next year's grade three, being about, right now we're covering about twenty-four, if we say stagnant on average in the class. Grade two is going to be a little bit more challenging, because we're, as we already said, we have five classes in four, because of the configuration. Right now, grade two is, is small, we're over, between nineteen and twenty in the class, but we have one moving in. So we've really, that is in the discussion page, there's a, this one, we play with all different case scenarios, whether it's me adding another class, how does that look if we add another, you know, break up that dynamic, because the third and fourth grade are retained right now, and they're divided by P L A and social studies and animal science, so they, they have one more teacher to kind of share, so we kind of talked about what does that look like, and we would add a third, maybe science and technology person to try to lower those numbers. So really, the planning and discussion pages can really take a look, it seems that everyone that moves in is either first grade or third grade, so.
Can we add to that before, before commending? We have some reconfiguration items on place to shift a, some of an ELL position over special ed, some of some other, of, you know, some over to help with Title One. I think if we had to, class sizes got that big, we might have to put that on hold and shift it over. So I think there is somewhat of a contingency plan, it's just right now, we don't know. I know based on school choice numbers right now, we have increased the number of kids coming into the district, which is very positive news, and if that trend continues.
Decrease the number.
Yeah, decrease the number going out, increase the number coming in. And ultimately, that may, may be something where we have to say, we can't do this, instead you've got to do that. So without knowing those numbers yet, we're not, we're not able to give a direct answer about what I am saying, and based on just reconfiguration, without adding any new staff to ACES, we could take care of a problem if those numbers get beyond what we think is reasonable, but it does mean that we may not be able to put in place some of those extra supports we're looking for for Title One or special ed. And so I want people to keep that in mind, and that's if we level staff next year based on the current budget. In the current budget right now, we are looking at asking the town for six, over six hundred thousand dollars. Out of there is, the, the, the whole number is nine, over nine million, but three hundred thousand of that is debt. So what we're looking for, to level staff in district after the debt is six hundred thousand, and add the debt, that's, that's, that's over nine hundred thousand. So keep that in mind as we're talking, because those figures are fairly high now, so I want to make sure people are aware of that.
We have talked about those, we're, we figured the staff, we have, we will defer, but it's also, so you was saying, we were talking about five of those from our school in presence of Athol, which is where Athol is at. those twelve hour schools in reference to Athol, which is where Athol is at.
Exactly.
Very, very, couple of questions.
Will you start talking first? Go ahead.
That's why I assume. I'm a little confused with you, about, you mentioned five before, five classes, four, why would that count?
So the way I, the way that schools set up is that we have five classroom teachers in grade one and two, and when we go to grade three and four, because of the content driven...
So we wouldn't bring one of those teachers out normally?
Well, that, when we talk about what would it look like, it would depend on most of them, but remember, we still have five first grades coming to second grade, so.
It all depends on...
K one, K one and two are all five, so it would be, they're certainly on the table, but it would depend on what those numbers are at the, at the end of, because if we don't, we do that, we might just be shipping the child.
Yeah, and one of, just so we know, Chuck, one of the ways to resolve that this year
was kindergarten numbers at Royalston were low, so we were losing kids at Royalston, which kept us from having to put an additional, so we could take an additional classroom from kindergarten and shift it out with that bubble that went up. So all those things, depending on what kindergarten numbers come in at, can also play a role as well as what the numbers look like at Royalston, because we currently have buses that go from Athol to Royalston, so if we need to ship a few people to Royalston to get the numbers down there, it's a possibility, but even right now, I'll be honest with you, based on the numbers we currently have, Royalston's running neck and neck with ACES.
So that's risky, you would like to know some decisions in here.
Exactly.
Come on.
Well, I've had my hand up three times and I haven't gone.
Go for it.
I never give up. Well, maybe I can take a lesson. The problem is, if I'm looking at this alone, there are four third grade teachers, and there's five fifth grade, five second grade classes coming in this year, so you have problems with another third grade teacher. Is it yes or no? I, I'm sorry, that's not it. But is that, is that where there's a flaw?
That, one teacher doesn't necessarily fix the problem, because it would really be in a realignment of how we run our classrooms, because we have that constant regular model. So that could be one way to fix it, but it also could be utilizing the stuff we have in the building to either add extra support, then do a, I mean, a true team teaching model could be an option, and not necessarily add another class, so there are a lot of factors. And also, if right now it stays as it is, it's not completely happening.
Moving the five classes into the core class, and it's moving more...
Right, that's, because that's in the current model, so those numbers are always a little bit smaller on, in the younger grades, and then they transition to a little bit, they are, of course, being pretty positive of the fact of, are we sitting right at that bubble where we might get too big for that?
Well, I know, probably in the October meeting, we had looked at adding third grade classrooms, but we felt that relationships of such with classrooms, it may change, we didn't think that was a good idea, but now that I'm looking at it, so that we're not facing the next...
It will be the fourth grade, actually, the fourth, just a, present third grade core, I believe.
So what you're saying is...
Can I speak to you, Shannon? If you want to give us another teacher.
That's right, I'll take two if you want.
If you want the numbers, we're thinking, we've had them, it's not a bad idea. We couldn't configure however to be able to get to that same place, but it does mean we'll have less support in title one or special ed that we want, but I think that's the answer.
Team teaching, we, we, a wonderful concept, but it doesn't take, like, a core class.
I mean, I was...
You agree with me on this one? It, it, yeah, team teaching is wonderful, and it's great, and there's two teachers in the, that made that team, that additional teacher made spend their time in different classes, but nothing better than that core class size or individual instruction time.
And that's just one option, we're not, we're not sold, and we have a lot of options that, that will never settle through.
Oh, yes, and, you know, having been an elementary principal for many years, obviously that you have the need for...
Where?
I want to, probably, once they're gone, concerned about the third grade moving into the fourth grade, third grade this year, two classes, twenty-six, forty-four, maybe the fourth grade, that's going to be a problem, and it's going to be more of a problem to get a couple more fourth grade kids over summer or over second half of the year, so I'm concerned about that, and concerned about the, the first grade classes of twenty-four, I'm going to the second grade, but I'm concerned you're going to have an extra class, extra teacher there.
Go through the same number of teachers as first.
Yeah, if you have the same number of teachers, then you're going to have classes that right now are twenty-four, 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 and twenty, I guess, that are going to be second grade classes of twenty-four, plus anybody else who happens to move in from now until September, so.
First and third, not fourth.
So those, of those numbers are considerably higher than this committee, it's strongly recommended, and, and we kind of, through our, through aligning the standard, we said that, that we don't want K one to, you know, to be eighteen, we certainly don't want K one to be over twenty, and for three and four, the ideal size would be twenty, twenty-two, we certainly don't want to go over twenty-four. So we still, and I think that there are people on this committee who feel exactly the same way, that those sizes, if you carefully look at it, requires adding another teacher, requires adding another teacher. It's not at all that we don't need the guidance, and we don't need the special needs, uh, super seniors pocket, we definitely do need those, we just don't need them at the expense of large class sizes, and in the meantime, going out and finding additional money in the school budget to be able to afford both, then I think that's what we need to do, as I said, as basically as this afternoon, that if we have to go to the select board or at one of the town meetings and say that for the first time in many years, we've seen dramatic improvements in the M-CAS because of all the work that this district is doing on, uh, to support kids, we do not want to see their hold back next year, we can't afford their hold back next year, we need the resources to do that, so that's what I'm envisioning. Can I start with small class sizes?
Uh, no, I don't want to tell that. But, and I volunteer when I was in school in third grade, and last year with the class of kind of keen, when I go in now, I'm twenty-five, over fifteen, so I don't know that. We know it's money, but, I, you know, it's a known fact, the town of Athol did not spend anywhere near a cap money that they could have, to you, they had, they limited on how much additional money they gave us, and, so that's unfortunate, because we're talking to six figures, they could have spent more, speaking out of the cap, the two and a half percent cap, so I think we need to be more aggressive this year than we have.
Well, I appreciate the commentary from the school committee, the purpose of this report to, you're supposed to have it for our budget, so I appreciate your input.
I'm not going to complain, because I, I'll say, the committee is saying...
Just do it.
As well as asked, that we need to do it, so I appreciate this report.
Okay. Sure. Don't we have something for them?
Yeah.
We all have one.
But you're preaching to the choir, voters, it wasn't Lee.
Really?
What's under the handle?
I just, you said this, Haywood, um, Grant Health.
Yeah. So I'm going to speak to Haywood Hospital. Ultimately, okay, ultimately, and again, in searching for funds in order to support our district, I want to give credit to Haywood Hospital, they came to me a couple of months back saying they would like to put a clinic into ACES Elementary School, if they could come up with funds to do that in place, so we supported that, and I'm happy to say we have received the grant. So June thirtieth, if anyone from the school committee would like to join us, Catherine and I will be meeting with them, I'll, I'll, I don't, January, I'm sorry, January after the meeting today, anyway, yeah, January thirtieth, we'll be meeting with them at the time for Catherine, if anybody would like to join us to hear the details, but it's literally a health clinic for students, so it is, I think, going to be a great benefit, because instead of students having to go get their health kit, doctors, office parent, come in, take their kid down to the health clinic, and then go right back up to the classroom, so, because it is labeled a community school, and a true community school has those type of functions within the building, and so we're very excited about it, and I know based on the numbers we talked about last year for the nurses' office, that this is another way, and we should maybe get some help here, that kids have been seeking out of our nurses' office and instead in the, in the clinic, so I think it's going to be a win-win all the way around, but I just wanted to acknowledge that.
I sent this to the desiderate viewers yesterday, so I might as well say it, the fact that people are coming to us like this with offers to collaborate is attributed to the outreach you have been doing, to our sake, the fact that the, we are known now as a school system that is welcoming collaboration, it will be community collaboration, so that can be...
That was the twentieth or the thirtieth?
The thirtieth, January.
What time?
Eleven.
Eleven o'clock, and then it's where?
My office, although it gets bigger and it's all...
We'll go to the conference room.
Conference room. And another example, I'd like, uh, of, of, of kids beyond M-CAS.
Okay, moving on to vote on the Aces donation for a storage shed.
May I please direct me from more?
Daisy, okay. I was going to make a motion, except anybody, anybody wants to, whenever they want to get it to us. Okay, all those in favor?
So, basically, the Royalston Academy is offering five thousand dollars to pay for a storage shed at, you, hold on, four thousand, I apologize, for a storage shed for Royalston, and we approve from that from the school committee.
All those who made, all those who seconded, all those in favor? All right, vote for Armskiel Spring fundraiser, it's something simple.
Yes, lunch pricing, Carolyn's waiting patiently.
Oh, God, I'm sorry, lunch pricing.
Come on up, I'm going to have Carolyn come up to talk, we had an audit of our lunch program, and several recommendations were made, and so Carolyn would like to speak on one of them.
We're going to get an auditor back now, so we're not charging them for lunch, for second ones, all lunches are offered on the free, second lunches, we need to pay our pricing out to the former Aces state, so they recommend we do two ninety-five, two hundred, three dollars for our business.
You have on the home here. Daisy, I make a motion that the U N State tells us to...
Do we have any students?
Please stop the second one.
Make a second one? We have two.
Well, I just don't think it'd be a lot of things for me.
The state calculation is based on, they want to at least to cover your food costs and your labor costs, so they go calculation and make it normal.
Okay, and who else? I see a motion, make this a second, and it's in favor.
The next, I want to bring up Tom Tolecki, he has a request for the PTO for fundraiser.
Thank you, Garcia, this is a letter, I believe, in the packet, something I haven't got, it's going to be some...
I would move a few...
Second.
I just want to have a quick one called...
Hi, darling.
There's a good question.
Do you want me to tell you?
Sure.
When this is someone comes in and you sit in there, and everybody hates the teacher, she teaches you how to paint, a lot of times, there's drinking, there's violence, I don't think they'll be drinking that bad.
I thought he wanted a way to get his office paid.
Okay, we have a discussion, all of the favors. Maybe a benchmark question?
So Molly is going to go through this, I believe in your packet you have the bell points as well, so as she goes through it, it's behind us, but she also, you also have a copy on your, in your packet, so you can refer to that rather than the screen, as you move through the, through the presentation. I want to let everyone know that last year, as part of my evaluation, one of the, one of the things that came up that the committee was looking for was data that would inform us prior to M-PAS, so last year we voted, inputted forth in our budget to purchase the N W E math testing, we have also put forward and paid for D C R D testing, as well as DIBLES, and so this is our first iteration of data, comparative data for the district of how we are doing in relationship to that. Molly is going to take you through the district segments, and then each of the individual schools will speak to their, their data slides as well, so Molly will be ready.
So I apologize, this slide is hard to read, but we should do this earlier, if you would, because we are, this is our data cycle that we've been rolling out at the district level, and as our C said, we've adopted a three-two assessment as a norm assessment, which we get three times a year. What's different between those and our common formative assessments is that those are norm reference assessments, so we're not comparing juxtapositions in our district, but with the national norms as well. So those we get three times a year, our common formative assessments are directly related to our standard, and those are given every six weeks, and then teachers are going through this cycle, as well as administrators really to ask, we learn about what students know at this point in time, and what those implications are then to do forward for instructional decision making. So when we look at the actual assessment that we use, at the preschool level, we currently don't have any screening tools in place for benchmark assessment that we use three times a year, however, we're in the process of working with our science consultant to go through a selection process with our director of early childhood, as well as the preschool and kindergarten, so we're in that process as well, the preschool screen. For kindergarten, we currently use two different screening tools, we use DIBLES, which is to assess their code-based skills in reading, and I'm not going to go into the details, but what you'll see underneath that are a subset of the different tests within math that we use. Similarly, we have basic competency as our comprehension measure for kindergarten, that test we give only twice a year, we give in the winter and then again in the spring, and again, there are subsets of what that, what that assessment looks at, that I don't think what those, if anyone has a question, I'm happy to. When we move up class kindergarten, for grades one through ten in our district, we now use N W E and math testing, and we use that both for literacy and math. When we look at math, there's a subset of skills that are tested for students that progress from, from grade one to two, three and five, and then grade six and up, and what those really are looking at are different strands in relation to math, and so you can look at that, you have that in your copies, like, to see more detail about how those strands progress, and then when we look at reading, the same thing, we have some strands that we look at in relation to literacy skills, and so those, again, start with more foundational skills and build up in complexity as we get up through to grade six and up, all the way through to ten. What this assessment does not assess, is it does not assess student... What this assessment does not assess is it does not assess students' writing skills. And so when you look at the test, it's an adaptive test and it's given a multiple choice format for students. And it's intended to find their breakdown level where they're getting 30% of questions correct and 50% of questions made wrong. And so I just want to make sure you're aware of that because when we then look at our forecast data later on, that has a lot of brain in it for the student. However, this assessment, we've chosen as our screening tool because it's very well correlated as a predictor for how students will perform on the forecast assessment. When we look at our data, I'm going to present our district-wide data and the principals are going to come up and speak more specifically to the data for their individual schools. When we look at our kindergarten data, what you're going to see is two sets of data on this slide. You're going to see kindergarten data for achievement at the top, the achievement levels our students are reaching. And then the graph at the bottom is showing their growth. And so what you're going to see is you won't see data for the gates because we only give that in the winters, the first time we've given that. I want you to keep in mind for the kindergarten data, there is a change in the assessment from the fall to the winter. The students are now assessed with some additional subset of testing skills. For example, nonsense word fluency is not something we assess at the beginning of kindergarten. It is something we do assess mid-year in kindergarten because of the developmental progression of the reading skills.
Do you intend to have some kind of screening device in place?
Yes.
And I want to speak to that. One of the problems is there aren't a lot of screening devices to begin with. And so that's why we brought somebody in to screen. Because it's a touchy, touchy screen because of the fact that they are not reading yet. And a lot of it is verbal or it's finding motor skills. So and we're saying. Right. But we're saying our main focus of the district, and what I've read, is literacy. And so the question becomes, how do you test literacy skills for a child starting at age three? And so it's a big question we're trying to answer.
So when we look at our kindergarten data, what you'll see is that our growth, when we look at the fall moving to the winter, or excuse me, our achievement levels, we've seen that what we've seen is we've seen 90% of our students move out of that bottom tier, which is something we really recognize. We have 90% fewer students in that beginning area than we had in the fall. And then if you look at that bottom graph, you're going to see it's 98% of our kindergartners across the district are making growth.
And the other thing I want to bring up here, we're not sure these are comparable because with DIBLs, for example, there's another subset test that is added in the winter that the kids did not take in the fall. So remember, our purpose of this data, and I want to make sure people are clear, is to really understand what the individual needs on for the students so that we can remediate. And so these aren't necessarily comparable because the test they took in the, earlier in the year, there's a subset test that was not included because they're not ready for it yet. So please keep that in mind as you're looking at this data.
When we look at our math data for grade one through 10, what you're going to see overall is that our data is pretty stable for achievement. So achievement-wise, our numbers are fairly stable from the fall to the winter assessment period. However, when you look at the second slide and you look at our growth, you can see this chart because you're going to see this chart presented later from all the individual schools as well. In addition to looking at achievement, we also want to see how our kids are progressing and how our kids are growing. And so with the NWE Math Test, they create projections of how much students should be growing based on the national norms. And so on this chart, the orange diamonds that you see are the projected growth rate for that cohort. And so that's what we would expect to see with the students after, or as a cohort of students, we'd like to see them at or above the diamonds on that chart. The blue bars represent the actual growth as a cohort our students have made from the fall to the winter. So what you can see highlighted on this chart would be, for example, grade three has exceeded their growth, their expected growth as a cohort for math achievement. Similarly, when we look at our, excuse me, our grades one through 10, reading achievement scores, overall, you'll see they're fairly stable. When we look at growth, you're going to see some variation. You're going to again see, for example, grade three as a cohort has exceeded their growth target. We do have some areas where we have been really asking a lot of questions and delving into additional supports because we've seen in some areas, as you can see on this chart, negative growth for a few cohorts. The principals in the school will talk a little bit more specifically about the plans to address that in their individual building.
So from the district perspective, it is very important that we understand that this goes back to budget two, where we have put our resources. You will see that in places where we put our resources, we are seeing non-the-projected growth in that being at the elementary school, particularly around reading and Title I services. You are also seeing it even in math, particularly at the elementary level in the lot area. We are now looking at the secondary and some of the things that we may need to do. We see in 10th grade, some significant growth happening too. And we made some changes that weren't financial, but we did shift and make sure some of the struggling learners, we're getting some of our more seasoned teachers to work with. So again, a change process takes three to five years. This data is going to help us to get even more precise about what we need to do to solve some of our issues. We will not change them overnight, but we are starting to see some impact of changes we've already made from this data. And it's helping us to even say, if we were to speak right now, what are some of the mid-course corrections we could make? Because last year, we didn't have that. We had to wait until EM Pass came out to see if what we, what we did work. We now have a view that helps us to say, okay, we've got to pay attention and sell more closely in some of these specific areas. And that's what the principals will be talking about is in the areas where there were strengths, what happened that made it that way? And then two, in areas where we may still not be where we want to be, what are some of the mid-course corrections we are looking at trying to do to boost that up? So I think we'll start with ACES coming up.
I have a question. I'm somewhat hesitant to ask this question, but as I look at over reading and math and I see some fifth through eighth grade kind of struggle and I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to assign blame anyway, but I'm wondering if you are grasping this because the fact that when we see those kinds of scores that are below, do you look at that and say, all right, there's a lot of work to be done at the middle school? Or you're looking and say, that's the result of those kids having been in the elementary school and not having worked in the elementary?
I think there were a lot of factors, yes, curriculum, number one. First was our curriculum law. So is it in alignment, first of all? Do we have the right, do we have the right materials to support that? What are the teachers who are teaching? Are they new? Are they seasoned? I think there are a lot of questions that have to be asked. So this is just gives us that first surface level thought process. So an example I'll give you right now is we have a math consultant coming in and looking at the middle school, in particular, and its program and some of the changes they've made. One of the changes she has already recommended is that we move from Engage New York to a different program because Engage does not now necessarily align with the literature or the new framework. So that's an example. And so I think there are a lot of factors, and I think Tom will speak a little bit more to this when you get to the middle school data.
Dave?
Yeah.
Can I ask a fair question?
It's not unfair. It's the point of data is to ask the questions, so we can fix it.
Molly, I have a question. Did you actually come up with some, uh, when the law was ready yesterday? About state, numbers from the state. I was actually pretty thrilled to tell the numbers of the state about all of the alignment of our curriculum. We have a testing that is lined up with them gaps. And we have goals that are clear, the progression for darts. Instead of ones that are moving or not there at all. So I'm really excited to see this. We're getting pod data now. We're getting soft or no data.
Well, that's definitely to the credit of our teams. Our teachers have worked really hard as possible.
Obviously, they're working on this.
Okay, so we'll look at the ACES data. So this is the kindergarten. As Molly discussed, the test changed a little bit. So if you'll see, if you look across the board, there was a dip between the fall assessment and the winter assessment. And that's attributed largely to students are showing growth, but they've been assessed now on a new scale. So it lowered that overall score. Then you have any questions about that for now? Move on to the holy grades. So this is our math achievement and growth. So if you can look at the bottom, we have the exception and a notable exception at grade four. We have shown growth across the board. And we met, not we didn't show growth, but we met what was the projected growth. Grade three, which was definitely is our largest class sizes, have actually shown the most growth. So concerns with this next.
There's a math theory.
I'm just saying. Concerns for us looking at this data, I mean, it's reaffirming to those in first graders re- that the strategies and curriculums they're working and were showing expected growth in fourth grade. It was, you know, time for some reflection and conversation. Some of our next steps that are targeted and improving across the board, but certainly targeted at fourth grade. We have our math coach working on planning. With the 4th grade teens, that's one of the things that's some reflection. Are we planning rigorous enough activities that are really letting scaffolding the student's skills? We have Lumi Math working with our 4th grade team, providing some feedback spending large amounts of time. And the classes receive a whole lesson from the, you know, the beginning, the middle, the end, the assessment. And teachers saying that's useful, we'll see, you know, how that translates into higher scores and student performance. And we also have our 2nd grade block that will be starting. So that should show an impact that was discussed in the last school committee. And that will be starting next week. And it looks like it's going to end right around April vacation is when that funding for that project will come to its conclusion. Any questions about this, about our next step?
Quick data question. When you're talking about 54% leading or covering the depth, when the average is above or below that, this doesn't seem to make that sense.
Which one are you looking at? I'm sorry.
The last column where it says, he makes it now, where it's about 18%.
It's 48%? The last one?
The last one is 54% of the bottom, I suppose. Doesn't seem to make that sense.
Okay, yeah. And I know you've been double checking though, because Molly's had to go in and do some of these figures. So we'll double check, we'll get back to you because there may be a mistake there.
There could be a reason.
Yeah. Now I'll double check. We will check and get back to you.
We'll double check. I don't have my original date, so I can't, I can't speak to that.
That's fine.
And so this is our reading achievement. So reading achievement, you can see first grade is hovering right on that projected growth line. But again, grade three really making up some flyers around and they have homework. They have over, so I'm not saying I don't want that teacher. I'm just saying. And some of the things that, you know, take away from this that we have any wonders programs, teachers have followed into fidelity and the trusting that reteaching of skills so that this is going to come back around in cycle. And I think something to note is that it was piloted at the older grades. And I believe, I have to speak to last year, it was at grade three and four. So grade three, four, so those third grade teachers are, you're more skilled than this and they're returning teachers. So, you know, that's something to be always. Absolutely, absolutely. In first grade, they've had some discussions that they're looking at ways they can do some differentiation and change some classroom practices. And they returned, but they're hovering right on that expected growth track. So it's not as concerning. I think we can make some small changes and see some impactful results.
Okay, so this is the kindergarten, kindergarten, DIBLs and gates. I was speaking to the kindergarten teacher today about the data and I was like, oh, this is 29% and 36%. And then leaning, you know, they're kind of, as far as you're saying, it didn't look right for the fact that they're on the same test that was presented and tested and added. It's part of that reasoning. However, going from, you know, this is a big wake-up call. So we'll, you know, like with all kind of, when a kindergarten group rearranged their groups, we're actually getting triple doses now of meeting conventions during the day. We're having a purposeful play. Some individual students are being called over five minutes, 10 minutes at a time to go over the letters and sounds. And Miss Will Hyatt is also sending reminders home to parents to kind of encourage them to go over the letters and sounds to the children at home. Because at this point, you know, if you don't get those down, you know, it's going to be a struggle. However, too, with kindergarten, when we're looking at some of the scores, there's some children in that class that are really reading really well. So that's another conversation we're having with her, is how do you get those really high kids now, ready for more? So I think we've been looking a lot at the beginning, but through all our grade levels, that's kind of our next conversation is what if we get those kids ready for so much more to differentiate upwards as well? So if you take a look, I think the first thing that jumped out to me was the numbers. If you looked on the column in the beginning to the fall to the winter, you can see that moving kids on over this. So that was pretty promising. The fact that they're all hovering right around 70% is a good sign. There's been plenty of growth, movement, columns over. However, if you look at grade four, we know this, they really didn't move that much. The first two columns did by reading. And when you look further into the data, it raises it up into algebra numbers, you know, and the geometry standard was fairly, very low. So when I talked to the teacher about that, they hadn't taught the geometry unit yet. So she's confident, unconfident, have once, you know, once they learn geometry, that that comes a little bit. And they also compared it to last year's EM Pass data. And that was the same theme, the geometry theme. So we're kind of looking at ways to incorporate geometry well, get tired of it here. Because generally, they do it at the top once and then move on. So, okay. Good room? Yep?
I was trying to see the data. Looking at grade four, I see that the reading has stayed pretty much the same. But isn't there some significant growth in that the beginning has changed? You have much higher progressing.
Right, right.
And I appreciate you saying that, because I think sometimes people only look to the meeting. When in fact, if a teacher has a route that's fairly low, you can't move from beginning all the way to meeting. So, yes, so she's made some significant growth in shifting those kids out of beginning into partially reading. And so it says something, and even looking at the chart, you can see she would be on what she, what they predicted her to be for growth for that.
And if you look down, like you said, at the red column compared to the yellow column, you go, we're in the same digits in the second chart there. So going from all level digits to, you know, just to grade, you know, almost that single digit. That's pretty good. In as many years as I've been doing math in my other schools, I've never seen a growth chart like this on the bottom. So every, every grade level achieved their targets of growth. So that was some pretty exciting. And then this is reading. I think the same patterns kind of, kind of existed before the grade number one. Just what you said, they were 45% beginning at the beginning. And then they moved to 16%. So they moved a lot.
So they moved a lot from the beginning to the progressing, and all of that, you know, reading hasn't moved as much, it still has moved. And if you look on the bottom, grade one had the most amount of growth. And just so you know, as the grades get higher, the expected amount of growth gets less. I mean, I think that's obvious all the way up to grade ten. And in grade six, the others we got stood out, but there really wasn't that much movement in fifth grade, actually none. So I think what we're doing there is, in sixth grade as well, we need to kind of look at how we're helping struggling students in those grades. Sixth grade teacher was kind of in between two programs at that time, and I think he was trying to do too much at once, so he said, just do what you're doing, you won't be doing, because his scores have generally been calm. Yeah?
I'm looking at the math scores in math, and it's actually the same pattern as the reading achievement. What I, what I see is a lot of kids, I think I've seen a lot of kids moving from the progressive to the needing state, because those kids in the middle made a jump, the kids in the bottom did.
For the reading or the math growth?
I'm seeing, but I can be wrong about this, and I know there are different tests being applied. Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, I was wrong, the reading, the reading is definitely moving, and I can hear that.
It's okay.
I was being wrong.
It's okay. If you look at the growth on the bottom, again, we pretty much have hit our targets for growth on the bottom again, except for sixth grade, which, if you look at the scale, that's only in three points, it's two or four, the range of those two bars are, so we're just fairly off on that one. One thing for the struggling readers, and we kind of had talks about what we're doing for struggling readers, and Vivian, who's our kind of one teacher, has been going in there with surgeon, and taking apart the eras, which was great, but a lot of the classes have not been using Wonder Works, which is current wonders, which is the reading part. And I think that was just a major confusion at the beginning about when to begin using it, and which students to use it, but, so we're kind of starting to implement that in all the classes and all the discussion. Okay?
I just wanted to extend that with reservations, you and the ACES principle as well, because I think overall, as you can see, growth, there's sort of the areas that require work, but I really see growth, and I think that both ACES and our CS, we're really super good, and we can set a lot of staff, move a lot of resources, and it seems to be, it could be really making a difference. Please, you know, myself, thank the staff, all the members.
Thank you. The good part about this is that we're getting them right in the middle of the end, waiting until MCAT, when it's all over, and they are moving on to the next grade. This is the part now where, like you said, you know, hands on deck, we're rearranging groups, and we're really starting to hone in on those kids that are growing. One more thing that we're going to do at our CS is, because this doesn't count writing it, we're going to do a practice in MCAT open response, or in order to kind of get that data, to see if there's any, not necessarily individual students, but if there's a grade one, a kind of hiding skill, that we can kind of pattern the writing and the open response as well. Thank you. Yes?
I want to say, let's see, it's using one of those words, it's real speed, you know, and they can use another mediation program, a multi-long special education, could manage to figure out what you're talking about.
Thank you.
It's talking.
It's safe to say, I was not looking for, but this part of the meeting, the results were somewhat surprising, disappointing in some places. So my opinion would be possible explanation of the plan, what we've noticed is that...
Tom, can you just change the slide so I can click on it, just so that people can see it? And the statistic of math achievement data.
So pretty early, we did those sort of targets, I think, at the time, at least through the classroom, sort of, to build the course, the curriculum, as possible. I've been landing just a minute, but for sure, the time was for a break, Tom and I didn't press the policies, and these were the forums, often the second location, so those are positive, because I think the best of this writing, somebody who's working on quite a lot, raising those truths, it's my answer, activists, these reflections, and I think, it's impressive, not bad, so, I was very confident that they'll be better coming. I'm sure I'm missing some things, if you want to mention anything.
Yeah, I think we're, obviously, we're happy with the results, but we are kind of taking it, almost like I'm going to blow the locals up, blowing schedules, or enter these groupings, or enable the class to all bring it all red, and to make some, help machine, looking at some reorganization, a couple of things, a global role, and then a individual student level, for individual student plans, for example, student standards, if they can grow on, since we expect, to utilize, address the standards that they can grow on, so hopefully, this portion of that, testing, and I think teachers are really being, they were very, very concerned as well, that it was very clear, so we're very clearly, we should, we should act well, because one of the advantages of that is that you can go to individual, so you pass, you're all, so we have also a complete core there.
So, Mr. ... I have a lot of, I think, facts, like, maybe, I'm concerned, growth, who are pressing on, seeing how, because it's, 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 it's , I will put forth that we have shifted some funds over to middle school, so that they
can have a couple of cadres to try to build in some extra support for the kids that we're identifying that are struggling. In addition to that, as I explained to you before, the state's giving us additional money for extra support for coaching around mathematics, that we do now have a coach coming in from Susan Lee and Associates, working directly with the, with the math teachers, that's where the discovery of the math issues were coming from, and the materials that we're using, so that is being paired as well. Today, I met with, with, he's literacy with Molly, to see if we can also get in some coaching support around literacy. And so our goal right now, as I talked to Lynn today, about moving up the funds, hopefully, Lynn's going to get a miracle cure for me, and tomorrow, so we can get moving on that. And what we're looking at right now, luckily enough, is that Everett's K-12 ELA director has retired and started working with Susan Lee and Associates. So if all works out, she will be able to work directly with these teachers. And I do want to say that in ELA, we have three brand-new teachers at arms, and that's one of, I think, the issues, is just getting them some support and help as a new teacher, and how to actually work with these new standards. And so we need some of that, that support in place. And what we've seen is, in arms, we have that academic coach who really understands the standard as well, and can provide that support, and we've seen some of that uplifting of the data. So we want to provide that support to the middle school as well, because there have been some shifts in, in some of the teachers, and even some shifts in the curriculum. Now, remember, two years ago, for math, and English curriculum, this day changed. And again, we're catching up with our materials and with the, you know, the teacher's professional development around.
This is a bit off the track, but at the meeting I was accidentally at this morning, I think there was a discussion of the fact that the local teachers, you know, for a state, for instance, are not preparing the teachers adequately to reference the best practices.
We, I would say to you, what we have seen, and this, I think, is part of the dog, you are correct, I think what's happening is, teachers are being prepared for the content, but not necessarily for how to remediate kids who may be struggling, how to use data to actually detect that quickly, and how to differentiate based on a different levels exactly.
Well, I could ask you, this is not really treated, and the follow-up question there is, is there some way that we can get together with other systems and talk to places where teachers are being educated, so they look, you're not giving teachers what they need to kind of make a success?
You do, just so you know, as a superintendent cohort for Worcester County with Pittsburgh State every month, and so that topic has come up as, as a means to begin with discussion. So we are working at it from that perspective.
Good. You know what's ahead?
Not ahead, just that, that was before I even got here.
I would say, well, I'm proud of Tom, and that was the, and I'm watching some, less than, less than expected, and also, I would say, I still appreciate Molly, Everett, and I appreciate that. I'm wondering how much edge your structural leadership, full curriculum leadership, in these, these people, half of these meetings, they have a role in studying this, and saying, okay, where we go for this, when, twice a month, reading and applying, which is, I wish, 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 I Should have math books. You guys look back on it, there you go.
Obviously, we have our math books. Everyone's been in math as far as a rope, moving through a right way. And that being attributed to, to math teachers that have been in the top of the top. And as a result of that, when you actually take the academic analysis, as Dr. Ned said earlier, and she was working with us in some money base for our department. So we're going to purchase the materials, our materials. And along with that, we can, as you mentioned, software. So our math is software, so we're looking at that. How do we technically make that, okay, that person's training, using software? We've also brought in some math books, which are part of the, because part of the higher school. We have a range of books, including the map. We started that one at the Department of Standards. Right, we actually pay less than the staff. And going into classes and modeling it and trying to be that good. But then sometimes we're putting out a web. We have the distribution of the class sizes. We actually have obtained one of our substitutes who has donated for, we have, we're going to bring here. We obtained her to use class sizes. And we have also, the target is experiences, so we're starting to use. So we're actually going to change that. Can I just leave tonight for one more thing, Jane?
The other thing with ninth grade, we did make a change in the math curriculum for ninth grade this year. We've gone to an Algebra 1A and an Algebra 1B. So kids have algebra over the course of three years, and they also have geometry over the course of three years rather than one. So that slowed the curriculum down. So what this means is, the normal reference is based on a regular one-year algebra class. So we made, one of the reasons why we may not see the growth happening, because when the kids came in, they had such gaps. Part of what the teachers have had to do is go backwards a little bit, and catch them up on some of those middle school standards, and then begin with the algebra. The good news is, with the reconfiguration that we did, those kids weren't up in the same place they should be at the end of tenth grade with both algebra and geometry done. But it's allowed up the teachers to slow down the curriculum a little bit, to make sure those gaps are filled in. So the ninth grade math course, I want to be honest, may not be a good reflection with this data, because we've slowed down the curriculum. So what they should have been tested at, at this point, teachers may not even have begun that, because we've changed the way in which this course is being delivered. So I want to make sure that's clear. So I think there's a clear indicator, that we're even seeing growth happening, when they may not have gotten to some of the topics that were tested yet, is actually a positive for the ninth grade. So I do want to make sure that's made clear.
The test was, much more vigorous, you want to add a little bit more rigor.
Mr. Clark, if you might say, teaching Algebra 1A, essentially a half-year of algebra?
By algebra, we're doing a half-year of algebra and a half-year of geometry. And then the next year, the other half of the geometry, so that they end up with Geometry 1 and Geometry 2. Geometry 1 and Algebra 1 completed by the end of their gap. Whereas before, they would have taken Algebra the first year, and Geometry the second. But now we're doing the two of them for a couple of reasons. Like I said, first of all, it's to slow it down. And second, to make sure those geometry or algebra concepts weren't lost the following year. Because if I have Algebra in ninth grade, but I take the test at the end of the tenth grade year, those algebra concepts haven't been taught since the year before. So hopefully, we'll see the results of that when they get to their tenth grade MCATs. But those kids, when they came in, were severely low. And we didn't want to try to put the whole algebra curriculum and the whole geometry curriculum, you know, that first year, because our worry was that our kids wouldn't be retained for the simple reason that they were missing some gaps in the course. So we're making sure we can grow them up. So hopefully, that will result in success when we see that cohort in the tenth grade.
It seems quite, so that's also, we can, we're making progress, it's just only slow because of the cap. Ninth grade is a little bit closer. Geometry, that's also in addition, we're not doing so very well. Reading fever, that was a big difference between ninth and tenth grade. And one of the reasons, the reason for that is, this year, when we create the schedule, we put our veteran, the most senior students with the most, with the most, most great students. We have to have veteran people, we call them Aces, so we make sure that the teachers who have those experience will be able to do this. So, see, I was thinking, we are concerned that the record of the ninth grade will step up to the elevation during the day. You want to talk about that?
I think the ninth graders, what we see when we look at the data, is that the highest achieving students did make the growth that the lower achieving students did. So the lower achieving students actually moved, or higher moved back. And when, when I have a discussion on it, we wonder whether the record is there for the higher achieving students. So we talked about, with those ninth grade students, maybe looking at the tenth grade standards for those ninth grade students that are at the higher achieving. Would that make an effect on those higher achieving students who can see the same growth? So those are all conversations that I'm willing for them to consider, as we try to push those ninth graders. Rather than top level of original.
And just in the struggle, the students will be offering, this term, our services will be offering a, like, every other day, they'll be attending, sort of like an head catching mediation, our community community, which we have to work with them. And that's every other day, so that we, we'll, we'll, we'll be seeing the quality of academic teachers, getting intervention, moving directly to try to address the situation. So again, we have to try to show the way the national higher school department can work. And I have to say that we've actually seen huge improvements, we've been part of that, I think, partly because of passing to, who can assist staff. That's better.
I think, just an acknowledgement of the tenth graders, teacher efficacy is huge. And the two teachers that are teaching those tenth graders, convenient models of efficacy. If they can move as one, they push them to that. And just looking at that, I think that's what we, such a department, it is to go around. From what we see, those two teachers are going to have that, that going to be a big contribution.
Thank you. So ultimately, closing, there are two things that I want to emphasize again. One, I really want to give credit to our principals. This is the first time they're getting into duration data, and having to deviate to and figure out how, how do I plan and remediate some of these problems? And I want to give great credit to them, because remember, last year, we didn't have this, the first year they used it. And you can obviously see how they're using that data to focus their instruction. And I want to say the same thing for the teachers, because ultimately, for the teachers, this is the first time they're getting data to actually make some of those decisions, and also making recommendations about how we need to avoid to get these kids up to speed. So I really say congratulations, I've been working with data for a long time. And I have to say, the commitment that I am seeing at Apple, from our administrators and our teachers, has been outstanding. And I think that commitment is going to demonstrate and show in the long run, and how many more students we have achieved. So Lynn and I have been using the document at the last meeting, a kind of a draft version of the budget. We just want to make sure if anybody had questions, remember, if you've had a chance to look at it, to ask us now. We will present version A next week at the all-boards meeting. And there will not be much difference between what we presented last week, our last meeting review, and that version A. But we at least want to make sure we've offered the committee an opportunity to ask any questions on that document. I know we had, we got in a little deeper with the budget subcommittee and the academic subcommittee today, so I know some people dropped their questions. But I want to make sure we give that opportunity, if anybody has anything, that they have questions on, in that draft that we put out.
Have there been any changes in the draft version as a result of this data that you just presented?
I think a couple of things in the draft version have changed, don't have to do with the data, but they, because we already kind of need some of these things going in. But I think one of the changes that we found out just yesterday, is that we may get a reduction of over $69,000 in Title I funds for next year. We won't know until the summer, but that's concerned us. So that's one of the things that we have to take a look at, was not something we expected in any way, shape, or form. We just got the data from that. Because as you know, the way our timeline works, we don't necessarily have the governor's number before we're putting out the budget. That's why we did it kind of as a draft, as a starting point. We still don't have those right now. Right now, basically, with the document we got, is if we are below 15% of our kids moving, you know, that threshold, we are in jeopardy of losing money. And right now, we're at 14.75%, I believe is the number. Also, remember, we're still dealing with that census issue that happened, when we went from over 400 and some odd kids identified, down to 299, but back up, I now think to 306, but now we backed to nearly that number in the draft before. So I think that's playing a role as well. So at any rate, the money we thought we were going to gain from this, from the school choice, kids coming back in, got negated with this Title I. What happened? Again, just every month, people ask if we have it, so we haven't there. If anybody has any questions, and we got school enrollment numbers. I know that discussion can happen in relationship to ACES, and some of the things we may be able to do. I didn't know if anybody else had any other questions, and we got to that.
Financial statement? We expect a report. And I think I did have a couple of things on here. The small name, special services is transfer that we're going to make. People break, something from Valley, this is split between the general funding and the meeting break that we have. So that will, that will go away. Page three. We have a new Stride teacher, who is in high school. It was twice in the 33, 590 negative, but it is offset by other, so we set that positive, so positive result, mostly there.
Let me just explain that, where ultimately, we had a child come back from an outside placement. And bringing that child back is the force that they needed, we needed to open up a Stride program. The good news is, the cost for the outside, directly from Rod K, is paying for this teacher, so it was cost neutral. Change, and actually benefiting the high school, because now we have an alternative setting to put some kids who were struggling in the poor program to. So did you want to speak to that a little?
Any questions I can answer? Yeah, I think that it is cost neutral, and it's more than what you'd imagine ever, it's more than they can add to the resources. So hopefully, it will support the continuing program, and support kids coming from eighth grade that we know currently are functioning well in a law-abiding model, and continue to replicate that model at the high school, be able to continue their services. So that they can get the need, and get out to general education classes in a way that they can. At the bottom, it's located, that's where that transfer went for the fight. We're working on, I guess, the order of, for the fight. Back and forth on page six. So it's still working, you know, we're moving along, we've got huge dips in rates here. Like you once said, on the last page, that's where you see the choice number. Now, that was always a negative. We started now with 79,000 dollars. December figures have been in, our school choice has been in, we went from choice out of 353, 340, to a 800 back. Or, yeah, so back 13 there. On the opposite side, we lost agents coming in. So the net result of this decenter school choice was about $40,000.
And no kids are coming in, because we don't have space to put them. So it isn't that we're not, we're telling them, no, there's no place to put them, as you can tell by cloud eyes. With the exception of really the high school, we don't have room, we're being busy.
So our expenditures are tracking, tracking very well at this point. I heard a new report. As I said to you, usually by the end of December, even very last day of December, we get our transportation fee first. If you get your end of year report in on time, please apply October 1st. And I want to say, in the 17 years I've been doing this, I hope I didn't, even though I knew some of the numbers might not be quite right, I could always edit them later. So I got it in on time, we got 35% of our reimbursable monies that came in. So you're going to see 285,467 dollars going into that 29 on the next report. Because that's what we receive as a decent 31st, I think, this year. So by the time these were run, they hadn't gone to the system. You can see 285,000. If, I followed DESE and ASAM, or email DES and ASAM, what percentage that was this year. We haven't even got a definite percentage of what we're going to get for reimbursement this year. Last year, I think, when it started at 65, ended up at about 72. So for us, it's 1.15. So they're targeting about 70 this year, so this is 35% of that 70. So if we get 285 this time, or 285 next time, at the end of June, that 500,000 dollars figure could be actually 5 cents. If the state votes a number of 5 cents. So that's a good, that's a good point as well. And a final reimbursement, I think, will be at the end of June, to be on the record. That's the case. We have a budget for a transfer tonight. Yes, we do. Request from high school principal to reduce her dual enrollment figure, which she has to use the whole dual enrollment budget this year. And she wants to accelerate the lawn here for graduation grounds. I'm sure it's supposed to be at the end of graduation. There's a beautiful, there's a mound up there where graduation takes place, and she wants it to be nice and pristine. According to the scheduling, we have, for the other lawn, people come in, and they come in too late to make a ready for the graduation. MJ, do you want to speak on that, as far as? Do you want to speak on the lawn acceleration, the line under transfer?
I wasn't paying attention.
Yes.
It's fair, I was thinking, it's going to make a deal with the lawn early.
And also pay more attention, I think, to Roff's Peter, since we last talked, but then pay more into my attention later on. The reimbursement of that 1,600,170 dollars for the final audit MSBA reimbursement for the ACES project. Technically has to be voted, because it comes into our conference first, and then the transfer of it down. So technically has to be voted to take it out of our conference. So the ACES MSBA goes to audit. Yeah. As completed, and a final reimbursement of a million was received on 12/22 to the school's banking account. This is to vote to improve the transfer of the ACES health project over to the appropriate town or back off bank account via wire transfer that was made on 12/22. So it's already done, it's done, you have to post it.
Homeless favor?
I have to get that in there. I know. Under other, I just want to tell you that our DTND has been certified. I think a lot of schools may have gotten a certification from the VOR. Certification for fiscal 18 has been certified, it's 666,459 dollars.
We have a policy for, um, month.
There is a state policy when we, if other schools file.
Usually, it's done, but I've had Lynn within the, despite that, after that, we're considering that. Here are some, this is a city, we have a policy, school community policy. But that's probably the part about, is the school community policy that's 75% of the 30%. So I think that's likely, I'm not getting, likely with their.
I can not, I'll move it to the second.
One way you can check that is, which is going to be a duty, is to examine the MASC policy class. And say, see if there's a specific policy dealing with this.
I would be checking, yeah, the state has a policy, or the school community has a policy?
No, what I mean is, yeah, the state has a policy. But the MASC is a professional organization. They have policies for virtually everything on the sun. And it's very likely that they have a policy dealing with this. So it's not coming from the state, it's coming from a professional organization. It's likely to exist, and it's likely to deal with 5%, which I think I've actually seen before. But it's all in the way to find that.
There is none tonight, because basically, the data presentation.
Okay. What's the committee? Reports, report on budgets, finance, subcommittee.
I think, you know, we have discussed budget over the past couple of meetings, and it's a reprocess. So we're going to start getting into, you know, looking at data and seeing what makes sense, where to put money, where to move money. So let's move along with that.
Okay, facilities?
Facilities, we did approve a normal accelerated repair program, monthly voucher. This was for billing in 335,400, 85 cents. And just briefly, the boiler project, I kind of hinted at, told, there's a projection that it may be online by Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. We'll see. But windows and doors, that'll be the next phase.
Okay, negotiations. We are in process of negotiations, negotiating in party time. That's all. Okay, academic excellence, you met this morning, and we've gone over the media data that we did this morning, and also went over the video that we might have, which we all received last time. Anything else you can do there? Public relations. Yeah, two main issues, flags, that we have been talking about this everyone's, are moving ahead. We need how to improve our social media outreach significantly. We are now getting our videos and school committees are actually being shown on AOTV, and they'll also be on the district website. And the school, individual school websites are being checked and hopefully updated. Two of our staff come in a week, made on AOTV, so they can work with AOTV. We have a team from the Apple Congregation of Church Sponsors.